I'm calling the evening of the County Board of Education September 2014 meeting to order. Second item on the agenda is prayer. Would you like to ask Brother Ray with the lead.
Let us pray. Our gracious and divine heavenly Father, we come to thy throne of graces and mercy to offer thee our thanksgiving and the blessings of our lives. Our Father, we're thankful for this coming together this evening to make plans and decisions that will affect the learning process of our young people in this county. We pray that you would bless them and bless the schools throughout the county as they labor to help these young people prepare for tomorrow. Be with each one of us, continue to love us and bless us, continue to watch over and care for us. Give us peace through this night, forgive our sins in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Next time, the pledge of allegiance to the flag. We have a Palmer, Elmee three, Stevens, Abby Harper.
Let me present this to you, Abby, as a token of our appreciation for your coming tonight to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag, okay? Alright, let's go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda, legs from school board chair. I've opened full nominations at this time.
I'll make a motion to nominate Bobby Foster.
You have a second. I'll make a motion when you can make Tim Spicer.
Second.
First motion on the floor, Mr. Yates, nominated by Mr. Bobby Foster, the chairman. Second by Jamie Duke. We also have a motion on the floor. Well, it's birthday for the first one. The first.
He's got to do one at a time.
I'd like to roll call vote.
Yeah, we'll take the first one. First, Mr. Bobby Foster, the chairman. Roll call vote, please.
Casey Anderson, not president, James Cooper.
Yes.
Robert Foster.
Yes.
Paul Gallagher.
No.
Hassan Bell.
No.
Gary Don Melton.
No.
Jenny Lane.
No.
Tim Spicer.
No.
Mike Yates.
Yes.
Three yes.
If motion fails, Mr. Gary Don Melton is nominated, I'm sorry, Mr. Haskell. Meadows is nominated. Tim Spicer is chairman. And then, did you have a second?
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Melton had a second. Roll call vote, please, please.
James Cooper.
No.
Robert Foster.
Yes.
Paul Gallagher.
Yes.
Hassan Bell.
Yes.
Gary Don Melton.
Yes.
Jenny Lane.
Yes.
Tim Spicer.
Yes.
Mike Yates.
Yes.
Seven yes, one no.
Spencer, right, right.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It's your. Don't swap, please. We'll figure that later. At this time, we'll accept nominations for vice chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm not Gary Don Melton, his vice chairman.
I second.
Have a motion by Mr. Meadows, and second by Ms. Lane, for Mr. Gary Don Melton.
Hey, Casey's coming in the door, she just takes me.
She's the way on her.
Yeah. She just, she just takes me back since she votes yes. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. She, she just says she's her, and her. We can go ahead about it.
Go ahead. Are we ready? We have a motion and a second, and any discussion. Roll call vote, please, this minute.
James Cooper.
Yes.
Robert Foster.
Yes.
Paul Gallagher.
Yes.
Hassan Bell.
Yes.
Gary Don Melton.
Yes.
Jenny Lane.
Yes.
Tim Spicer.
Yes.
Mike Yates.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Next item is to approve the agenda for the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to do a consent agenda. And, Ms. Lane, you probably haven't done this before, but what you did, we combined some stuff we have on here. It's kind of cut and dry. It don't have a lot of discussion. We went over a lot of it Monday night. It's kind of, maybe to speed up the board meeting is what it kind of has to do and everything. But if you have any questions on any of them, or table it, and come back to it in the rest of the part of the meeting. Any way you want to do it.
I would like to do, number A, director strategic plan. B, school nutrition program update. C, coordinator of school health update. D, attendant supervisor update. C, Tracy City Elementary Strategic Improvement Plan. J, retainer agreement for Scott Bennett. K, mini van bid. And L, playhouse bid.
I second that one.
One question I got about the retainer. And David, I'm assuming you, you talked with him. The last I talked with him, my opinion was, we need to look back though. I think we've had him put on for about two or three years now. We need to take an average of what that was. What number did he finally come up with?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred.
Did you, did you talk to him about that?
I, there's a looking package right there.
Yeah, but did you, did you talk to him about the average of?
I didn't talk to him about the average, no. I did not.
I'm fine with twenty-five, but I think next year for sure, we need to tell him that we'd like to, he'd see his number closer to the average.
Have a motion to approve the agenda with the consent items listed. Second. Motion and second. Motion by Chief Gallagher to approve the agenda with the consent items. Second by Mr. Meadows. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item, approving minutes of August fourteenth, twenty-fourteen meeting. Make a motion to approve the meeting. Motion by Mr. Melton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Foster. All in favor of approving the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any recognition or awards. I'd like to just recognize Mr. Foster for the, the last two years he's been chairman. Me being a new board member, he taught me a whole lot. He's done a great job. He's, he's worked with everybody on this board. He's kept us all informed and just, I'm very grateful for the job he's done the last two years serving this school system, this board. I'd like to give him a round of applause. We have any committee reports?
One, building committee. Shirley called, you know, we've got a pecking list of our call logs, got about twenty-seven items. He called Chad. Chadler had asked a month ago if we would wait until Eric could come back because he was the super on the job we've done. And I thought that was the right thing to do. Well, we don't know for sure how many weeks this is going to be. He's going to come, but we don't know exactly when. But, the hall says that Pat Newhall has called Dr. Dickerson and requested a meeting that he wants to talk to him about something. And I'm just going to have to slide in that meeting and see if I can expedite this deal with Chad. To get that list to occur.
Can you, can you email me what's on there?
I'll have to get it from your shelf, but I can't use it.
One thing on, does this fall under the building committee's rule?
No.
No, that's, that'll be out of.
That'll be, out of, yeah, everyone.
Next chairman, I notice that we approved the minutes of the last meeting. We've got the uniform bid thing on there, and we approved the year first. I think we got some distractions here about that. So we need to take them out of that some way or another before we approve it.
Didn't we do that through a motion?
Well, I don't know for the bid, we're proving that they got it, but somebody said they yes, but we, they changed the terms.
I think we're okay living in the minutes because we, the bid we approved, they've now since come back and changed what we're trying to do. I think as long as it's recorded, and what we take action on it now, we should be fine there. Okay, on the unfinished business, item eight is the proposed director schools annual evaluation form. That was a form that's in our package, and it's, this form's quite a bit less wordy than the one we approved a year ago to do the director, to do the evaluation on the director schools. Of course, that'll have to be done in December and May of each year, per director's contract.
Right now, do we need to turn these in at the main meeting?
Yeah, the December meeting.
I mean, I just want my December meeting, bro, doing clean.
Right. And actually, I think we should have a, we'll probably have a special workshop and advertise it. And the only item on the agenda will be the director's evaluation.
We need to turn these in in case they're into a board meeting.
Correct.
Do I have a motion to accept the new form? Make a motion to accept the new form?
I agree.
Motion by Mr. Melton, second by Mr. Yates to accept the new director's school evaluation form. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item A1 is the Miracle on the Mountain playground project. Now, I know everyone's had, had a lot of discussion, a lot of phone calls since our workshop Monday night when Mr. Nunn came and gave us the presentation.
Yeah, but I think we need to table this until all sides have had the chance to, to get together and talk about it and see what the Miracle on the Mountain, what they're wanting, and what the, there's enough. Looks to me like there's plenty of property out there for both activities as well. They may have, have to shift it around a little bit, but I think it would be a good idea for, for everybody to just sit around the table.
They have the board directors already set up. Their board directors, our board, and then Barnes, Gero, Glaberate, have Meteor on the burn. And let's just sit down, somewhere in the library in here somewhere, get that map out, and let's just talk this thing over. The one we come up with.
I second that motion. We got a motion to table the Miracle on the Mountain project. I second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, last, item one, finished business is the Big Eight basketball schedule. Everybody, has everybody got it?
I just met with them when we went through, and they looked about trying to revamp the schedule, just a bowl and Thursday night. But as far as that made it, the Big Eight committee, when we went through it, you've already got fifty-six on Saturday. Plus, if you, if you go to playing on Saturday, you're going to make the principal big work the six days a week, with the mandatory they have been. With the high school plan and different things, this is, right now, as of now, still, it's still, there'll be some tweaking to it according to St. Andrew's schedules. But as of right now, this is the best scenario that we came up with, to get it done with more baseball.
And then our goal is to play.
He's, every one of us.
Play fourteen games, right?
Yeah, and play everybody twice.
And is there any reason why we can't start the last week in October like we're starting right here, I don't know if it's twenty-fifth or twenty-eighth, and end, end on Valentine's Day?
Well, if I can do that, you put a weekend for makeups, and then you got the Big Eight tournament after that. Basically, you're well into baseball.
No, no, well, actually, you don't. First baseball game is on, is on April first. So you end mid-February, that's a week, first, last week in October, play one game a week, which is Monday, Tuesday. If you needed to have a make-up game, you could schedule those on Thursday, in there if you needed to.
But you also have to be in East Bay tournament to, to play.
And, and I, and I agree. One of the things that I, one of the things that the input I got is that we have, you know, you know, I don't know how long it's been this way, but we play so many games a week, sometimes two or three games a week. During the schools, during the actual season, we're playing more games, we're practicing. So the opportunity to get better throughout the year is less than playing so many games a week. So whenever it comes time to actually go play the TNT, we're not able to compete on the level that we once was. And also, I, I don't know, I know I hear academics talked about, and that's pretty obvious, you know, as far as that goes. But to me, looking at it purely from the, from the academic standpoint, I feel like we are better serving our kids if we play one day a week. That gives them an opportunity to practice two to three days a week if they want to, to get better as the season goes, instead of trying to bang, bang, Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday.
Before, how many games a week, they been playing, just like baseball, we was through football, and all them that play on the same night?
I don't, I don't know that football plays on the same night.
They play in my plan, they have. They play ten thursdays, you know, right?
But, but not, not during the, not during the basketball season, they don't play. Their, their last game.
What's the difference in basketball playing a Thursday and middle school football playing a Thursday?
I, I didn't, I didn't say anything about Thursday. I said, one game a week, is the only thing I said. Is from the, from the athletic standpoint, that was, that's just my, and as far as the way everybody votes, I'm not saying, I'm saying that to sway the vote. I feel like that we need to have basketball in kids' hands, October first, or later than October first. We need to be playing the first week, or last week in, in October. And try to schedule the games on Mondays and Tuesdays only, and, and as far as the make-up game goes, something like that, we could have, we could play on a different day other than that.
You want to check their family, or they just play everybody all the time?
No, it's, you got, that's fifteen weeks. That's fifteen weeks right there.
Space it out, to begin October, and what was the Valentine's Day?
Yeah. That's, that's fifteen to sixteen weeks.
When do they go in the barn?
Um.
When do they go in the barn?
We're in the barn last year in February. In February.
In, in the February, that's right. That gives you a two-week bucket before baseball ever actually starts core practicing. Their first, baseball's first game is in, is in April.
I feel like the alternative is cutting it out and playing one game where it was spaced out, is a win-win for everybody.
The reason that they've always, one of the reasons they've always tried to get over too, is right there in February, you've got all the high school big tournaments. They've always worked this around the high school where they can be. That's something you, I mean, you, name your big eight coaches, won't you?
I, I can, I can ask the high school coaches. I just, I just don't see a lot of high school presence at the, at the elementary school game.
We got to have two tournaments. You got to have your King of the Bell tournament, you got to have the Big Eight tournament. What, what's still for the same week, long last one time of the week?
What are you saying is, is wrong with this schedule?
I'm not, I, I'm not saying, I'm just saying a better alternative, in my opinion, is try to have, try to start the last week in October. You know, do Valentine's Day, and with the goal in mind, playing Mondays and Tuesdays primarily. You can fit in a second game if you had to in a situation, as far as make-up games, things like that. Then roll into it.
This schedule looks like it starts October twenty-eighth, winds up January fifteenth.
And then you have the Big Eight tournament starting at January twenty-fourth.
Yeah, but you got, you got two or three games a week. But, and does this include fifth and sixth grade as well? That's what I'm saying, so you got parents that are going for three games a week, and you can't, you know, you can't leave your kid at home. So if you got more than one kid, you're going to two and three games a week every week. Three games a week, since you've got more than one kid.
Was, was there a lot of, I, I didn't get any calls from parents, but was there a lot of upset parents about Big Eight playing on Saturdays?
There was a master.
I got about four. Just briefly ask, because like y'all said, I mean, fifth and sixth have been playing on Saturdays. They're playing anyway, why not just?
Well, we took the Big Eight tournament and put it on Saturday, and most of fifth and sixth kids.
Well, you, you don't have, you don't, if you, if you start in, in October and you finish in February, you don't have to play on any Saturdays. You play one game a week, and if you wanted to play two, you could. Monday, Tuesday, you got two days in there. Of course, you move to Thursday or Saturday, whichever. If you had to, but you got, you got sixteen to seventeen weeks to play that.
I think the decision is pretty much to remove the schedule and say, we're not going to play on Thursday, and then we can play one game. Or if we were spaced out, where they can play two games, like we always have with the Big Eight. Because I, I don't understand the Big Eight goal. The Big Eight to the kids is, is bigger for the state. I mean, the Big Eight is, is a really big deal to these kids, and it needs to stay.
You just don't think of the sports, if long as the grid, the, the, whether the check plays team, or you can go to the team.
But they, but they haven't done any good in the last ten or so years since we've been playing two or three games a week. Last time we won.
Well, if we're trying to start in October, give yourself that.
Valentine's.
Valentine's Day. I make a motion to leave the office schedule, because it does exactly that.
No, it don't.
When does?
When starts October?
When does middle school football?
It ends October the twenty-third. And that's, that's the bowl game. October twenty-third.
Does this not start seventy-eight?
Twenty-eighth October.
Yeah. And ends, January fifteenth.
Thirty-first November. Or thirty-first again.
Right. About one night a week, get the piece of that case, and Thursday nights, just to test.
That, that's right, that's what.
Rags up and everything, looking at kids first, and score set.
The schedule that you're looking at right there is two nights a week, it's not one night a week.
That's, that's about three nights.
You know, I mean, as far as our scores, we have plenty of stuff, twenty-seven, thirty, that we need to work on.
I agree with that. Are we going to make, are we going to quit playing Middle School baseball on Thursday night?
No, I don't, I mean, I don't know that middle school baseball is a competition. I thought middle school baseball starts in.
Listen what Paul's saying. I mean, that's weekly. He don't want more Thursday nights sports, we don't, we test on Friday.
That's not what he said. That's not what, that's not what any parents is, I've heard any parents say, anything about baseball having a problem. I've not heard either.
Well, if they're going to test in the fall on Friday, they're going to test in the spring on Friday, Gary Don.
As far as middle school baseball, do y'all play during the day or night? How do y'all do it?
We play at night, we play, most times start at five o'clock. And with this schedule, we just move it behind up to five-thirty, these kids will be home by seven-thirty, eight o'clock. For middle school, they'll be home by nine or ten, and that's not, they play during that.
As far as baseball, right?
Yeah.
Let's talk about basketball, I think.
How do you do the one?
You can't separate.
I'm thinking too, we have control over elementary, this system does.
That's right.
Control over playing Swatch County, Pikeville.
That's right.
We have no control over that.
That's right.
We don't have control over our elementary program here, and that's what I'm getting at. Because going along, State of Kansas, I've been on it for twenty years, and says we have to play each team eight times, or nine times, or whatever. But when these test scores come down, the state comes in here and takes over the school system, we're in trouble. And so which one are you going to put?
We can't look at just one school. We've had Tracy's dad, and I think that's our fault.
I think so.
We've had three separate principals at Tracy's school in the last three years, and you can't get a principal in there to stay. And that's our fault. And we can't punish these kids and take away their big age. And we not have the principal's paycheck to fire the teachers.
So I think, so I personally think.
Principals don't take the test, the students take the test.
The principals are there to make sure that the teachers have their job, and we don't have a secure environment. And, and there's no sense in punishing the kids if the grade failed to put a principal that's concerned that you're.
We're not punishing the kid. They're still getting played.
It can take me anyway.
But, but Paul, but Paul, but doesn't, doesn't, doesn't starting in October, finishing in, finishing the last, uh, uh, by Valentine's Day that week, that gives us seventeen weeks to get our Big Eight games into, play every team twice, and make-up games if you want to. And we're not, we don't have, it's, I don't, we're not saying we have hard data, there's facts, academics. I'm looking at it purely from the score standpoint, this is the best.
The whole school, we can't fight.
It's, and it's what the high school coaches told me, they felt like it would be better if the kids were practicing more through the week instead of playing every, every other night and not getting, not improving. As far as.
That is a good argument.
And that's, I just listen to people in my district, that's all I'm saying.
That's a good argument.
They're all, they're all saying that all we're doing is Big Eights, is, is not improving right here, we're just playing games, just, just playing games.
If we spread it out, like Gary Don has to do, and it's a win-win, we play one game a week, which is what I thought this was. And then the kids get to hear Big Eight, the big game, like it's always been.
You don't know the game, if you don't know the game, when I asked you, I had to give the people in the Big Eight department, I was hoping so.
Well, we've done that, and it, this is what we got. I mean, it's an option. We've got a motion, but it's, it's what the Big Eight said. And then we have a mo, or we've not got a motion, but we've, we've got a lot of discussion about stretching it out. Everybody, everybody, all schools get the same gates.
I'll go ahead and make the motion then, to let, we start, we put the basketball in the kids' hands, October first. We start our first week of games, last week in October. We end our last week of games in the second week in February.
When is Big Eight tournament?
It'd be the, it'd be the, after the regular season. It's, it's always right, it's always right after the regular season.
I know you're talking about the ending on Valentine's Day. You're talking about ending the regular season.
Yeah, that's right.
Tournament the next week, or, well, you could have, you could start the tournament that weekend on Saturday if you wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, you could. I ain't looked at the calendar. I mean, that's just the way.
Well, it would, no, I'm looking at last year. It would be on Friday. You would start the tournament on Friday. Valentine's Day should be on Thursday, or, or, not going to be on Saturday.
Yeah, so you, so you would start, you would start it on the sixteenth.
Yeah.
That gives you plenty of time for baseball, and baseball's the last, last week of February. And, and I'm not saying pick the schedule, who plays what, and win. I'm just saying that's what I, I want to make the motion. And that's representative from, from the athletic standpoint, and like Paul said, there's probably some academic advantages to it too.
So we have a motion by Mr. Melton to start Big Eight practice October one, and end the season, regular season.
Well, start practicing with the ball.
Right, start practicing with the ball.
I think they practice, they practice all year long, as far as the ball. They need about two, three weeks. You, now you want to say for that?
I'm saying.
I have a second by Ms. Anderson. And, of course, we've got a lot of discussion on that, so we'll just go ahead and just make some, do a roll call. And this time, for two years, many of the Yates have always got to go last, so let's go over the orders, and we'll start with the ball in the alphabet, middle, first. Yeah, the motion is to start practice with the ball in hand, October one, for the Big Eight season, and then the season, the regular season will end February fourteenth.
We'll start there. We'll start the last week October, end the, you know, Valentine, that's a week of Valentine's Day.
Uh, Mike Yates.
How many days it take us to do the Big Eight tournament?
Take a week.
Long as we in that barn the last week of February, I'll vote it.
You're good. I, I, I'm just looking at it from the athletic standpoint. That's, that's the basis of my motion. Just keeps kids continuously working through and playing year-round.
Tim Spicer.
Yes.
Jenny Lane.
Yes.
Gary Don Melton.
Yes.
Hassan Bell.
Yes.
Paul Gallagher.
Yes.
Robert Foster.
Yes.
James Cooper.
No.
Casey Anderson.
Yes.
Name the yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we, we consented to the first few items under new business. And since we got some bus drivers here, just want to make it clear that since the consent was approved, what we're. was approved, what we're gonna do as far as the alternative school children is that we're gonna leave the policy as is, which is if a kid is sent to alternative school, they will not be provided bus service. So you all won't have to worry about the alternative school children being on your buses. And, uh, we, we talked about that. We greatly appreciate the job you all do. We have a hard, very hard job, a very demanding job, and we wanna make that as easy as you all as we can. So just wanted to make sure y'all were clear about that. The first item is the, uh, item G, now, uniform bid. Director, Mr. Melton wasn't here for the night, she wanted to explain what's going on with the uniform.
Yes, sir. At the, the last meeting, uh, bids were accepted for uniforms, and, uh, then Mr. Moon checked with them, and in addition, we just wanted it for one year, basically. Mr. Moon did check with that, and no one was really, uh, or Universal was not really, uh, wanting to honor that for a one-year deal. They want at least a three-year deal to honor that price, which would not end the bid. Uh, so they would not agree to that for one year at that price. So the discussion was, some point question we did with that, and I think, I just thought it was also, uh, done some checking on this, and.
I talked with our attorney, uh, Scott Dennis. He said basically that we could force their hand and make them honor their bid. But he said actually, it would cost us more than what it would be worth. So he suggested that we rebid it and either specify one-year or three-year contract.
Well, with them saying they can't make money out of one year, and three years, they're gonna lose a ton of this money. And spending, extending the periods, I'm gonna make them make even more money. That's the always argument.
I think what, what the argument is, or what the concern is, they put the money into uniforms and in the name tags and things like that. Is what.
It would take them three years.
Totally.
The, uh, I understand it was, um, it takes eleven months to go through, the money made less than, uh, twelve months, the money they start from the beginning, from, um, that being said, um, every eighteen months, they replace all their, some, some repairs, some replacements, but, uh, they guaranteed every eighteen months, they replace everything.
Is that in the contract written?
That's the third contract in, uh, um, a little bit. Uh, I got to talk with Universal and they sent a letter, uh, stating that they would honor their bids. They gave us three years of the price they were willing to negotiate.
Wasn't there something about a replacement in writing, uh, that they guaranteed?
They guaranteed every eighteen months, some replacements. Uh, the only thing to note that he did say would be rebid it, they could guarantee that we would get that price off in three years. And probably have like a million eighty percent, five percent.
And, and we got, and we got bids from Airmark and, and how close was Airmark to you?
Uh, I think it was one hundred fifty dollars a year.
And, and Airmark, and Airmark, uh, theirs, theirs is what we want, what you say every year, right?
Well, Sam, they've had, they've had sort of a five-year contract with an annual deal. Uh, and I'll be honest with you, I don't really, where all this stemmed or started from, but I understand what we could go beyond here, and that's why we got this process started. And, uh, it's great, and a big ordeal, but I don't really think it had to be.
I mean, it's something we've always had, the uniforms, right?
We've had, and, uh, I don't know, when they were last bid out, or we leave their thing, I mean, I think they're five years, just never been done since.
I, I feel like the, the, the Airmark do, Universal, I don't feel like the Universal, uh, company is giving us what we've asked. Is the Air, is the Airmark, are they?
They will honor their contract, uh, that they gave us, uh, just continue the service they have, and, uh.
Do you have a problem with them? Have some trouble with them?
Well, we've, yeah, I mean, I've got guys that come out name tags over shirts, some of the places halfway down where they've been ripped, uh, and they're, you know, I mean, it's, it's not.
So you're saying their service, you think they're great?
Well, I'm not saying their service ain't great. The service is good. It's the quality of the product.
The service is part, quality's part of the service.
Well, service is fine, but the product's not, not good.
Any one of the, uh, other company, are they guaranteed?
What I notice is one of the places that's using them, if they are on state bid, uh, they're replacing it.
So, so the, so the price that they're giving us, they're saying that's a three-year contract?
They've locked that in for three years.
And it's better than the Airmark?
It is one hundred fifty dollars a year better.
And I, and I think that must be better than what we've had in the past. I mean, obviously, we got the opportunity here to say.
So far, we've been able to cut, uh, a thousand dollars a year off our, your whole price, just that, just changes that relate, uh, this, made additional one hundred fifty. So like, plus a hundred dollars a year total savings, uh, in the last year or two, so.
Mr. Foster, did the attorney advise, advise you the best action take on this, just to rebid?
He, he indicated that we could force him into honoring his bid. And he said, but should he luck it, it would cost us more than it would take work. You know, so he, that's where he came in with just rebid it, and specify whether it was one-year or a three-year deal. So we can go.
Well, it don't, it don't sound like.
Yeah, we, we could specify anything we wanted to.
It sound like we don't have a choice. They're gonna go, they're gonna want a three-year when we want to run. That's gonna be the deal. If we rebid it and the price goes up, then we lose it anyway. But they don't say that's rebid, that we, they're not guaranteeing the savings right now.
Both companies did state that, in Airmark did state this, that if they had to bid, if they new clothes, the same way they start from the trash, the way Universal did, they would have agreed. So, and only thing that saved them, they're already.
So you gotta have new uniforms. We'd save one hundred fifty dollars a year.
Every eighteen months. But we would start, yes, we start with new uniforms, we start with new clothing. They want, in a eighteen months, they agree.
Has Airmark ever given us, given us new uniforms across the board?
They have, but it's basically, I mean, it's, you get, uh, fire pants this week, and six months later, you might get no shirts, but they never, they be in the street clothes anybody. Like they, what they do, they will charge for name tags and all that.
Is there a label reason that we cannot honor through your contract? Anything state, federal, whatever? Is that we have to go on your contract? I'll make the motion, we go with uniforms and then give you three-year contract, based on the savings and the fact that they can give us new uniforms fifteen months. And the fact that the service from Airmark and their quality is the best pool.
Well, if we're going to do that automatically, it's gonna come without that. Airmark can get on test.
Well, I mean, y'all would be verified if we rebid, uh, we don't stipulate that there. It, worst case, we lose the money, but we save money regardless, because it's already the same as about, like I said, a thousand dollars a year, or, you know, the things already changed, so.
Are we gonna stipulate both companies provide, start out new clothes?
That was in our original bid. We did that, so we wouldn't go back to that, then. Y'all would make a three-year contract with just rebid.
Did you have in our eight, every eighteen months, they give you clothes also, or how?
No, we just, I think we had, we're just getting new uniforms, and, uh.
You wouldn't want to go three years with signed clothes. I mean, it's something in there.
We, uh, we, we have already.
So it sounds like your recommendation is just rebid it, same as the attorney.
I, I may not, what I'm getting, I think that probably.
It's not going to cause hardship to you?
No, no, I mean, Airmark's honored while we have that, I mean, uh, they're not gonna change the price in the way you get a new contract or whatever.
So, I think if we go with a three-year bid, after eighteen months, they ought to furnish the new uniforms. I'd like that in the bid.
Give them, give them a three-year contract, because they, they were eighteen months late. Use new uniforms.
Start out with new uniforms, and eighteen months after that, they do the use, and then end of that three-year contract, we'll rebid it again.
Well, has Mr. Meadows had a motion to, uh?
He acted, and you can draw that.
He, okay, don't want to draw it, do that.
It's, it's, it's like, I hate to go against Mr. Meadows. I was studying. I think, Mr. Moon's go, and one of Mr. Moon's recommendations, I mean, I hate to go against your, your more favorable manager, you know?
Well, see, we're, we're getting kind of backwards here. We're having a motion, then we're discussing, then we're getting a second. So, because you really should discuss it if you get a second. Just because you say it, don't mean you gotta vote for it. You know, so right now, if we, we talk about it, and we ain't got a second for the motion. But, uh, heck, then I just, I was trying.
I make the motion, we accept Mr. Moon's, uh, recommendation.
Say it. Got a motion by Mr. Melton, second by Mr. Meadows to accept Mr. Moon's recommendation to rebid the uniform contract.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold. Motion carries.
Three-year, three-year contract, and eighteen months new uniforms. We start out, yeah, start out new, and after eighteen months, a new, uh, running band, a proposal.
Yeah, has Mr. Moon taken that?
Fourth next item, I'm gonna pass this sheet around. It's got the, uh, committees on there, and whatever committees you would be interested in sitting on, you'll just put your name there. I'll give those out at the next, next board meeting. Next item is the archery program. And Mr. Melton had some discussion about, well, we approved that several months back, the board did. We approved it with, uh, understanding we were gonna buy one of the archery kits for each school. Dr. Dickerson had some conversation with one of our employees that was helping with that, and you want to claim your recommendation there?
Uh, I guess what we talked about at workshop, uh, was that instead of giving every school a complete sale, since some of our P teachers rotate anyway to different schools, basically, and the high school, of course, high school has a, a two P teacher, uh, but to purchase approximately three, uh, for the entire system, and let the elementary, uh, P teachers go to their different schools and do that, except Tracy. Tracy does have one P teacher. Basically, three kids be rotated in the school, with the provision that each school would have the ned. The ned is what, uh, helps stop the air.
Can we take the, the additional money that we wouldn't be spending? Uh, how much is that?
It's approximately three thousand per, uh, school or per kit.
So how many kids would we not be, or would we not be purchasing?
Well, we'd not be purchasing four kids per.
So twelve thousand dollars.
But, or if they didn't, but I don't want anything, uh, they're the line just for that. Savings, I don't know that we can say, you know, right here's the line for, for the archery kids.
The plan was to take it out, the number we left in, in the board, school boards?
Yeah.
This way it's.
So this would be nine thousand instead of, uh, well, instead of twenty-one. And you get one thousand, approximately one thousand back from the state on each kid person.
So six thousand dollars for that.
So six instead of fourteen.
I'm, I make the motion, we, I'm all over that. Make the motion, we accept Dr. Dickerson's recommendation, the archery.
Say it. Motion by Mr. Melton, second by Mr. Meadows to accept director's recommendation to purchase three archery kits for the school system. All in favor, say aye. What you need to go about? Does that include the ned? You gotta have ned's for the school, right? Is that part of your recommendation is to, to get the ned, netting for each school?
Motion carries. Anybody know what kind of chips are on the dirt that we're balancing out for?
I bet it's not the surgery.
Oh.
I bet you in the winter.
Oh, okay.
I bet it's not the surgery.
I bet it's Dr. Ranger's lady.
Yeah, it's kind of three inches over here.
Okay, that's the last item, I'm gonna get that down to TCA. Will we go discuss that resolution? Back to table? Yeah, we, we don't have to take action on it, but we, uh, but Mr. Foster talked to the school board attorney about drawing up the resolution. We talked at the workshop about, uh, paying the principal payment on the Co-Mont School project this year, not entering any, any long-term agreement with county commission, just this year, it may making the payment on the principal as opposed to the interest. And, uh, the attorney suggested that we, that we get a, something in writing, making sure that those, that the bill is dated us to drum the board education instead of drum the county prior to us committing to pay for anything. And I spoke to Ms. Van Hooch at the court house this morning, and it was indeed in the board education's name, and the director has a copy.
Is, is everyone's bill in in our name?
Well, she sent me this afternoon. The rest of them, I don't have a chance to go through, but tomorrow we'll have an answer on that. But, well, I guess we need to take action officially. We, we, the commission's in agreement. They're appreciative of the fact that we're, we're willing to pay the principal this year and then revisit it in January when we start the fifteen, sixteen budget.
What's the principal on that?
Well.
That's for, uh, a long one. Can, can we as a, a, a budget committee meet, talk about that before we do that? There's several angles in which we'll have to approach our budget wise. And I feel like we need to, uh, look at our existing budget and see what money we didn't, uh, appropriate, just budgeted, and try to, uh, get those ducks in the row before we.
Actually, they've done got it all figured out for us.
Did it? Oh, the county commission? That's good, but I don't believe that.
What we, what we decided the other night at the workshop was, we budgeted thirty-two thousand for the interest, industrial budget, so we got that. Since we're gonna pay the interest, we're not. So there's those two thousand. Then we're gonna use what amount was our surplus from last year's budget this year.
Yeah.
And then the rest is gonna come out of the fund balance.
Yeah, but I.
Because this is just a one-term payment. This is a one-time payment. This isn't a, an annual agreement that we got with, and we're both gonna revisit what we're gonna do in January. See where we're both at in our budget.
Well, really, if that, the county commission should have been having this discussion with us six months ago. They haven't got their budget, you know, yet.
Okay, so, so this is the help them finish their budget.
Right. Because the problem is, if they don't approve our budget next week.
And, and that's okay. And so, and so what we can do as budget committee, we can still need to determine how much, um, actually comes out of the fund.
Absolutely. We got the base to figure out how we're gonna tackle it. But the bottom line is, we'll agree to pay the.
Did they not say that they'd already made one payment for?
Yes, last year.
Last, or well, this past make.
This past make, that, that made a two hundred forty thousand, I was like.
Right. So this is, this is table two of ten years, so.
Well, every time I get around, we cheer someone in on that first payment, overpaid.
And that would've been made. We can't go back. That's fine with me. I, I don't have a problem. As long, as long as we're not specifically, uh, alligating where the funds are gonna come from right now. We should be able to pick a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand out of our budget here, put it down at Christmas.
We just need a motion agreeing to pay the principal.
We just wanna make sure that then we start our school system down coming October first, schedule without pitch, nothing can pay. So you keep them happy, I think we can get our budget passed.
And I think, and I think it's a step in the right direction, maybe, first.
I think it is. So you have a motion for what now? Just that, uh, Grand County Schools will pay the prin-, principal payment made in twenty fifteen.
I saw who.
I saw. Motion by Mr. Meadows, second by Mr. Geller, that we would pay the principal payment on the Co-Mont line made in twenty fifteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold. Okay, now Ms. Campbell.
Just a couple of quick things. Uh, we are gonna begin the collaborative processing again Monday afternoon. Look forward to that. And also, on Monday night, during Dr. Dickerson's, uh, strategic plan presentation, he was talking about the evaluation of the teachers and the, uh, degreased rate of pay. And we were just curious when the teachers may expect that to start.
It's a, it's a, it's not just a one-step process. We've about completed now all the processes, and we're hoping to have that in the October paycheck. But I cannot promise you that. But we're trying to clean up some, uh, little areas that we have, uh, simply because maybe some, uh, evaluation we're not completely in, or anything like that. But we're, we're looking to do that in our paycheck.
Okay, public comments? Ms. Brown?
I am Chief Brown, and I'm currently president-elect of the Little Rotary Club. You should've had a letter in your package from our club. We, um, we are interested in building and maintaining a positive relationship with the school board in terms of you'll be seeing some of us at the board meetings, because we want to be aware of what's going on in the community. And on occasion, we might want to make you aware of some of the things that we have happening in our little. And on occasion, we might want to make you aware of some of the things that we have happening in our little Baileywood. Specifically what we're asking, and I understand that you're not going to give any answers here. But we are interested right now in having the use of this building, and this discussion was enlightening to me on March the 6th. And my immediate concern in asking that, and I spoke to Mr. Rowley back in July, this issue. Uh, we would like to have the Harbin ambassadors back again. Indeed, we have contracted with them. And we are hoping that we can have it here. And having had years' experience, be a little bit more streamlined and do it a little bit better than it was done uh, last year, work out some of the bugs, so to speak. But, um, and having said all of that, I want to assure you that every penny that was realized from last, this previous March, as well as anything that comes from the next March, goes back into the community in terms of local projects. We have a number of them that don't matter to us, the engineering programs and various other things. Upcoming this month, the, uh, Books From Birth Bus is going to be in Tracy City Elementary for a presentation there. We are strongly pushing for people to read, to their children, read often and read early, because it helps to form their brains and increase their potential in terms of education. Uh, one of our biggest projects, and Mr. Gates may be well aware of this, our current major project is in conjunction with the city of Colmont, is to work on Fips Park and make another place in the county where kids can go to play. Part of that, not all of that, part of that will be made compliant with the American Disabilities Act. And then next year, when I am president, we would like to go for round two on that park and expand further. Um, I said all of that to assure you that the things that we are about are things that are positive and are good for the community. And we're just asking for the use of this building and asking for communication with you. As a matter of fact, our president this year had asked me if I could get email addresses for each of the board, so that he could occasionally send you an email to communicate. So this is where we are, and as soon as you can, we would like to have a reply on can we have the use of the building on March the 6th? And can we get email addresses so that we can communicate freely with you? I like email better than telephones myself, unless it's necessary. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. We'll, we'll have that Harbin Ambassador game on the agenda in October. And we'll vote on that, get you an answer, and we'll get you the email addresses as well.
One thing is, if we're going to have to change our date, the sooner we can do it, the better. The closer it gets to March, the more limited our options become. Thank you.
And we thank you for all the property that's provided.
Yes, ma'am.
It is a, a great auto organization. All the services you all provide, uh, help this county in more ways than I can describe. And we're very grateful for the service the Rotary Club provides.
I do want to share that with the folks next Tuesday or next week.
Anyone else? Ms. Bell?
I'll come up. So you can hear me a little bit better. I'll move up here. Um, I do want to introduce you. I, I am Wanda Bell, and I am a retired Grand County High School teacher, biology teacher. Currently, I serve as AG in the classroom representative for Grand County. And I'm here mainly just to tell you all that, um, there is some, a little bit of misunderstanding about what the Grand County outdoor classroom is and what it's about. And you've received a letter like this in your packet, which explains some of the history of the outdoor classroom and what its function is. And I just want to answer any questions that you might have. I know you've tabled the discussion about, uh, the playground, and we do believe it is a worthwhile project, and we do want to work with all about this, but we would like to explain that the Grand County, uh, outdoor classroom is not a Farm Bureau organization thing at all. The Farm Bureau women did use the outdoor classroom this week, and we thank you all for allowing that to happen. We had a close to 300 students and guests and visitors there yesterday for very worthwhile meetings. And the students learned a lot about agriculture and education in Grand County. But that's not the only thing that the outdoor classroom has done in the past. I know some of you are concerned about how it's being used now, and I do know that the current, um, schedule for the high school does not make it as conducive for the students to get to the outdoor classroom during the day. But it doesn't mean it cannot be used for educational purposes and has been in the past. In the back of the room, if you have time before you leave tonight, I brought some scrapbooks and notebooks and some posters of things that have been developed. We actually have a statewide curriculum guide for using the outdoor classroom. Craig Kimrow is here with me. He is with UT Extension Service, and he and I have worked closely together over the years in developing, uh, educational uses for the outdoor classroom. So you have something that you should be very proud of in Grand County. A lot of counties wish they had an outdoor classroom like we have. It's the largest in the state, if you want to know the truth. And before y'all consider just what you want to do with it, you might want to think about, this was an article in the Tennessee Conservationist featuring Grand County's outdoor classroom a few years ago. And I want you to see this. And there's also, uh, some articles and things. We've had summer science camps there. We've had, and most recently, the, uh, freshman academy, and for the summer, used the outdoor classroom. So it is still being used. And I know some of you don't think it has been. And this was an article that came out in the current Tennessee Conservationist that came out this month about an elementary school that has an outdoor curriculum that they use for their students, and it helps them improve their scores. Listen, you can add to the outdoor classroom, it has potential. A writing assignment, so all of you are stressing writing. If you can get the students to think outside the normal classroom and go out and hear the birds and listen and see the trees, they get a whole different perspective. And the students who came, a lot of times write us letters thanking us. So there's another writing opportunity that students have when they visit the outdoor classroom. And it's for any student, any classroom in the county to use at any time. It's not just limited to the high school. It's for every, you know, student, teachers who want to bring their students to the outdoor classroom. And some of you were there yesterday. Some of you may want to tell the school board that we're just here to answer questions. And I know my three minutes is probably, I mean, Craig, you know, the support, if you all have any questions about what we're doing there or what it's all about, please ask. And, and if you can include us when you start deciding what you want to do about the outdoor classroom. We would appreciate it, because we have spent lots of time, hours of labor and money. There has been lots of grant money awarded to the outdoor classroom to develop it and to wear it today. I have a scrapbook of Craig's story in 1998, and why it looks like he does today is because a lot of groups that have worked long hours over there and labor to develop it and to wear it today. And I just want you to think about that before you make a lot of decisions about what it is, is to do. If you have any questions for Craig or myself, or Craig, you want to say anything else on it. If anything else you want to add to or ask us about the outdoor classroom. I wish I'd known this. It's an awesome place to sit. It really is. And you should be very proud that Grand County has a facility available for students to use. Now, how it's getting used right now, I don't know. I'm not sure either. But I do, I do think it's, I'm one of the all-competent ones here. Thanks. Okay. And be sure to look at some of these things if you have time before you leave. Thanks.
Any other public comments?
Outstanding. Thank you, June, for, uh, your support for the cluster, and that policy. You don't know how much that means to them, and knowing that they got your support and y'all behind them. And for me, I want to thank you for your support. Makes my job a lot easier, and it sure makes third one easier. I just want to say thank you.
Oh, we can do a journey. Motion is taken. All in favor?